This conference will now be recorded.
Joanne, have you got everybody checked in?
I have trustee Hyde, trustee Grabowski, trustee Bedore, yourself, and I don't see Kellogg as of yet.
And Alicia's on?
Yes, Alicia's here too.
Okay, good. Okay, well, let's open up the meeting. And Michelle, do you have anything to speak out for Kevin?
Everything is status quo.
That's good to hear. Good to hear. Thank you. Anybody got any questions you want her to get back to Kevin with? If not, Terry Jones?
Hi, everybody. Beautiful day that we had. Final day of summer, I'm guessing. I wanted to ask the board, I did send an email out earlier this morning. Dylan Bolgar and John Farmer both have 40 hours remaining in their anniversary dates. Actually, Dylan's has just gone by. And John's is, I think, today or tomorrow. I was asking the board permission for them to carry their 40 hours over the next year.
What's anybody want to say? I mean, it's tough to get everybody in, but that's not how the contract reads.
Honestly, with everything crazy that's been going on, I think these guys should be able to carry over their time because there's certainly no way we can give them a bonus, and they've been working hard.
How much time has John got, Terry?
He has 40 to carry over as well as
As Dylan?
As well as Dylan.
Okay. But somehow, they gotta start to schedule their vacations.
Right.
Especially when we're down, it's hard for you to know when they're not going to be around and
Right. It's difficult with them being off till June, and then Dylan and John are both here, basically covering all the bases while those other guys were off. So it was hard for them to actually take time during that period.
Did everybody get their CPR done?
Pardon, Norma?
Did everybody get their CPR taken care of?
Yes, yup. We've all done it. We're just waiting for the hands-on part. I've sent the certificates except for Sam's, which he just sent that over to me tonight. So soon as we get scheduled, we'll go over and do the hands-on and we'll be certified.
Oh, that's great, Terry. Thanks for getting that done. Does somebody want to make a motion? I guess we should do them separately for 40-hour carryover for Dylan?
These guys actually worked when everybody else is off, right?
That's correct.
I definitely would suggest that they get their vacation time, that we not take it away from them. I think that's really important, especially to the morale of the guys. I make a motion that they get their time, their carryover. I think it's pretty important to the morale of the workers.
I agree.
This for Dylan. So would somebody second the motion for Dylan to carry over 40?
I would.
Okay, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the motion's carried. So will somebody make a motion now for John Farmer?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I? Okay, a second for John Farmer carryover?
Me. Michelle.
Michelle? Okay, Michelle, thank you. All. All in favor of the carryover for John Farmer?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, what else we got, Terry?
Um, I think I reached out to you about the library's fuel tank. Buried propane tank is leaking very minimally around the gauge. And it's an older tank, so they're not comfortable with trying to change that gauge out. So I spoke with Brian Wadham from Christman, who's going to be supplying our fuel. And we, and I've spoke with Brooke, and also Nancy and Norma, about putting a 500-gallon propane tank on top of the ground. And we'll build a little fence around it for aesthetics. And it's going to be considerably less than trying to excavate that old tank out and install a new tank buried. Basically, once we get it hooked in, if we change, change the tank out anyway.
Did you get another quote done? That's what I was kind of waiting for.
Well, I spoke with Mike Doctour about giving me another quote of doing it the other way as I have just spoke. But in talking with Brian Wadham, it's, you know, they will hook it up. All we gotta do is dig the trench over to the unit. And he can set the tank, Christman will come in and set the tank and run the line. That's what he does. And it's definitely, I'm not sure of a price. He didn't give me a price yet, Norma. I just met with him, but I I don't know if it's part of our contract or not, but I will find that out tomorrow. But I just, I think I've got the solution. And then next year, once that buried tank is completely empty, the DPW, we can remove that tank.
Oh, okay. So do we want to tell Terry, does this move forward on this? And we'll get, you did tell me they've got heat down there, so we, you know, it's not
Yes, it's not empty. They still have 30. And like I said, it's very minimal. There's 30 pounds left in that tank. So it'll get until the time that Brian can change us over. I believe we start October 1st, but he says he has hookups through November right now. So I'll get with him tomorrow if I get the approval, and we'll get the ball rolling and see if we can't get
Okay, well, the tanks belong to us or they belong to the fuel oil company?
It'll belong to Christman. It'll be their tank.
Okay. All right. Okay, does somebody want to give Terry the okay in a motion to continue with this?
I would make the motion to change things out in the way Terry described.
I'll second it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm okay with that. I don't know that we've got to build a fence around it for them.
Okay.
I mean, I don't care, but they've raised a ton of money for, you know, that beautiful sculpture they got out front. And I don't know how elaborate or what they want, but let's get the tanks and see what it looks like.
What about safety?
Oh, lots of people have a tank out.
Yeah, I mean, it's
Now they have a lock on it. It's not mandatory to have a fence around it, but let's get the tanks, get that moving forward and worry about a fence later.
Right. And then, and then down the line, if we decide we want to bury one and we become, you know, we want to decide to bury it, we can pull the old one out and bury a tank next year when we're, when we're actually have it budgeted. That's the problem. We really don't have that money to play with right now.
Okay, so we're all set. Terry, to go ahead. Okay. All right, that's good. What else you got, Terry?
That's all I have. That's all I have right now. Do you have anything for me?
Well, where are you with the truck you wanted?
Um, I can't order it till November. But I have spoken with them, and they're, they're gonna get a quote out to me as quick as they can, but the 21s don't come out till November, so.
Oh, yeah, okay. I was wondering what it was going to be, 20 or 21. So you're not going to have any information until?
Yeah. Something at the next meeting.
Okay. I've got a question for you, Terry. A few weeks ago, you had to take one of the tires out of the playground over here.
Yes.
Okay. And I know we had a hard time finding those when we did the playground, but if you got the specs on it, so maybe we can do a little homework and see if we can find a replacement.
Okay.
If you've got, yeah, I think you know about
Are they missing that tire, Norma?
No, but if you had the specs on, I know they can't have that wire band in it and
Right.
You know, so if you got the specs to me, I'd see what I could find. So we don't have a whole
Yeah, because those were the original tires. I have no idea, but I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Well, it might have been in the specs we had for the playground. I don't know. I don't remember. That was a while ago.
I know they were, I might still have some of the stuff from the original build back in the 80s, I believe. I'll see if I can find, if I see if I can dig that up.
Okay. I had an email today from John Peach at Save the River on something else. And he wanted to make sure that we thanked you for your guy on the truck for that pickup day. So that you would know that. We did get a truckload of stuff, so that was good.
Yeah, no, that's
Anyone have anything else for Terry? If not, Megan? Are you with us, Megan?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, you're on.
Beautiful. Okay, well, I guess I'll start out with what I have on the agenda. My updated water treatment facility system emergency response plan. I made a couple updates to it to include some new things that we incorporated into the water plant distribution system with the upgrades that we've made regarding SCADA and the new generator that we have at the water treatment plant. So nothing too crazy, but just a couple minor updates, hoping to get the board's blessing, the adopting the new emergency response plan for the village.
Would somebody make that motion now before Megan moves on? Emergency plan update?
I'll make the motion.
Steve, okay, do we have a second? We need a second.
I'll second.
Nancy, okay. Any questions more for Megan? Or are we all in favor? What are we doing here? All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
And nobody opposed? Okay, so you've got that done, Megan?
Awesome. All right, I got a couple there. Quick updates. The operators have been out doing mainline flushing and some preventative maintenance on fire hydrants and mainline valves the past week or so. Just about a little bit over halfway done, and they're hoping to get the stuff this week. So that'll be good to have taken before bad weather comes. And this week, we're having the Development Authority GIS specialists come in and do training on manhole inspections on the iPad. The authorities borrow an iPad, so we, it'll make manhole inspections a lot easier. More, and a lot easier to kind of compile the information at the end. So we're excited for that, and we'll be starting those inspections probably next week after we wrap up flushing. And all of the guys did complete their CPR training, so
Oh, good. Thanks, Megan.
Yup. And last little tidbit is tomorrow, the guys will be cleaning our filter number two with the citric acid and then sitting there for a couple days. Hopefully get the symptoms the rest of the way cleaned off. And Kester's planning on being here October 13th to switch out the gaskets and O-rings with the new O-rings that will hopefully take care of the leaks for the long haul. So we will see how that goes. But as far as the water plant project, we finally got everything wrapped up with Global, so that just leaves a couple odds and ends things from our project engineers that they need to get to us. And we're really encroaching the end of the project and getting it wrapped up, so that's kind of exciting.
That's, that's great. Megan, are you waiting on Richard Ingersson to get you the flood plan information for the ready grant?
Yeah, I've left messages and
You were looking for a letter, I think, from Dick Ingersson?
Yup. I haven't gotten a response from him. I kind of reached out to him three or four times following the
I'll call him in the morning.
I appreciate that. He's not
All righty, I'll call him. Okay.
Thank you.
What else you got for us?
Uh, that, those were the highlights I had. Aside from, in the personnel section of the board report, I did start well, I did a analysis of the overtime for the operators from this year so far. I don't know if you guys saw that or not, but
Yeah, I did. That was great to have a better understanding of it.
Yeah, I mean, most of it, at least half or more of it is scheduled overtime for weekends and holidays. And the other is Collins and, you know, Collins or Collins, if they gotta come in, they gotta come in. And that kind of just shows what we're looking at on a monthly basis, and it fluctuates depending on what's going on in the system. But it's really not bad when you think of what these guys have to cover. You know, we got 16 pump stations and two major treatment plants, you know, so to have a couple Collins monthly isn't unusual if, because when something's wrong, they gotta be there to take care of it. So, um, so I'm gonna keep, keep track of that stuff and keep that graph on just so you guys can kind of see how we're trending with all that going forward.
Does anyone have any questions for Megan? No, if not, Megan, I guess we're all set. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Oh, I know. What are we gonna do about this mini length thing? Are we gonna be ready to do this in October? When we, is that the next going?
I haven't heard any recent updates from them. They've sent Joanne and I a couple emails asking to fill in information. And we've given them everything they've asked for, but I haven't heard any confirmations as far as are we gonna be ready to go? I would, I'm starting to get an iffy feeling. You know, we don't have a lot of time before we're reading. We got two weeks. I'm thinking that we're gonna be by time, it's showtime, so we might be looking to February.
Okay, I don't want to get it started and not be able to read the meetings.
No, no, no. And we aren't gonna rush into it.
Okay, all right.
Get all sorts of training done, and there's a lot that needs to happen before we go completely to community length. So I'm, I'm more next year.
Next year, okay. Does anyone want to ask Megan anything else? If not, I think you're all set, Megan. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, on the consent agenda, items one, two, three, and four, does anyone have any questions?
Uh, I do. I was just curious as to why there was such a jump in payroll. It's been running about $32,000, $33,000. And it's up to $39,000.
We got paid this time, would be in there. You know, all the quarterly people?
Sure. Okay, that makes sense.
I don't know. That's what I think might have jumped it up.
It's possible.
Oh, any other questions? If not, can I have a motion for items one, two, three, and four?
I'll make the motion.
Is that Steve Bedore? Yeah. Hey, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Are we, everybody is all set? No more questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Okay, on the capital projects? Do we have any questions there? If not, can I have a motion for item five?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Michelle. On a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. On the police officers here, they've got, their raise was given to them the same time that the full-time people. But we've got to have a better understanding. We've got an HR department now. And we need to have this go, anything like this go through Alicia, because then we're in trouble with civil service. And we finally got 40 years of civil service cleaned up, and I don't want to get back into that. And maybe we should just call payroll people too and tell them that it has to come from HR, not from a department head or anybody else. I don't know how anybody else feels, but
Maybe just send a memo saying that you want to clarify the procedure and remind everyone.
Right, and we should remind the department heads as well. I don't know
That's who I'm talking about. Send them a memo.
Yeah, okay. All righty. So Alicia, do we have to do them separately or can we do them all together?
Uh, no, you don't have to do them separately. You can do them as a group.
Okay, so would somebody make a motion for the four police part-time officers for the raises they got? As printed here on our agenda?
I would. And I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Nancy and Michelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, anybody? Okay, thank you. And Alicia, you'll get this information to civil service, right?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks. And now we gotta do the crossing guards. Good thing Kevin called the school. They hadn't even got to Kevin when school started. If they even needed him, I guess. So we need an approval for the, I think it went, that's great, we've got five people. Because we usually have to use our DPW guys if somebody doesn't show up. So can I have a motion for the 1360 for the crossing guards?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, now I have a second?
I'll second.
Michelle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Okay, I had a couple of things that didn't make it on the original agenda. And did, I know Steve and Nancy got the harassment seminar taken. How about you, Michelle? Where are you on that? Michelle?
I think she had to leave early, remember?
No, no. I accidentally had myself muted. I haven't had an opportunity yet. There's been a lot going on for us. So now that the holidays are over, if we don't travel,
Oh, okay.
I'll be okay if we travel, then I don't know exactly when.
Yeah, so we need to get that behind us because it's a mandatory issue. So if you could get it done by the next board meeting, that'd be great. And I think that's it. I don't know about Jeremy. Did you hear anything from him, Alicia?
No, I have not.
Not, okay, I'll see what I can do. Okay. And I've had a few people ask about what the traffic pattern might be once the project is over. And Kevin's trying to put together some ideas, and DOT has offered to do a plan for us. It isn't anything we've got to do, but they've got all the know-how and everything to do it. So if you tell me I can get a letter off to DOT to do a traffic pattern. There's John Street was really difficult this summer. Some people want that to be made one way. I mean, it's a long process. You have to have a public hearing, write a law. But if DOT would do the work to get the plan together, that I think would be helpful. Does anybody have a problem with that?
I would love John Street to be one way.
Don't you, I mean, but some people want it one going towards the park. Some people want it going the other way.
Honestly, I think Webb and James should be two ways. And then every other street that's running north-south, one should be towards the river, the next one should be away from the river, and so on. So that there's less congestion. And I also think the streets that run east-west should do the same thing. Every other street being one way in one or two directions.
Well, we'll make a note of that, Michelle. And when DOT spends thousands of dollars and hours, say, hey, we had that done in five minutes.
Sorry. I've been thinking about it a long time.
Yeah, good. Can I give them a letter to tell them to go ahead and do the survey, though?
Oh, the survey? Sure.
Sure, okay.
Yes, yup.
All right. Joanne had did a stellar job to get all the taxes in. We've got 95% of the taxes have been collected. And then right on top of that was the water bills and the past due notices. And I think there's just, I mean, I don't know, is there $10,000 left, Joanne?
Yeah, there's only $13,000 now.
I mean, that's a great job by Joanne to get that wrapped up. So that's a good thing. And you might have some input on this too, Michelle from the chamber. They want to do a scarecrow contest.
Yes.
And this was kind of in a casual conversation, but then Tricia wanted to know if she could put an ad in the paper to encourage people to do a scarecrow.
The whole thing is they're trying to do something for morale.
Right.
And her ideas were, their ideas were wonderful. They weren't just Tricia's. What they want to do is essentially have things in one place, and then people do their drive-bys. I'm not sure about judges, but they want people to be able to drive by and see everything so that it still feels special. It still feels like a holiday. You know, trick-or-treating is still a little bit up in the air. So that was the impression I got, and I thought it was, the way they described it and, you know, the logic of it was wonderful.
Oh, good. And another thing, way back before COVID, we approved all the events for the chamber. And they had reserved Frank Park for Pumpkin Chunkin'. And they would like to use that on the 17th and have the farmer's market down there, just to have some activity downtown. Does anybody have a problem with that?
I don't.
No, okay. And the vendors want to extend the farmer's market up here at the park until the October 29th. Let's look at
That's wonderful.
So it's been a huge success this summer, so they'd like to just keep coming if they can. Are we okay with that?
That's great.
I think it's, the other thing is they're talking very creatively about ways, not to save Christmas, but to do things so that people remain engaged in the community. So they've been vaguely talking about maybe doing a parade where the floats stay in one place and people drive by in their cars. That's obviously just, you know, what if we could? It's not, it's where they're definitely making decisions. But they're really trying hard to not make money, but make community.
Right. Well, I think we've just got to start doing a few things that are fun.
Yes.
You know, and say that we're still alive and well. So then, this weekend, I saw some, a friend of mine, and they were talking about the wedding down at Centennial Park, and that was pre-COVID. That that was approved. Does anybody, there's just a small group.
I think as long as they stay in, this is just my opinion, as long as they stay in COVID guidelines of
Yeah, they were all
and masked.
Right. And I think just the wedding party is going to be there, then they're leaving there to go to the reception.
That sounds
Happens at the reception, but I didn't want you to see people at Centennial Park. But it was a long time ago. They talked about it. So we're all good there. What else have we got?
I have one thing. I had a couple people, one lives in Cape Vincent and the others live in Clayton, approach me about the sidewalks. They look gorgeous. A couple of people, there was an older woman who couldn't get up the step into a store because now that they've redone the sidewalks, the steps are higher and they're not really handicapped accessible. And they had originally told us that they were going to make sure they were accessible. So I don't know what we do about that.
Oh, I don't think they said they would all be accessible. There's not enough real estate down there to make them that way. And they don't have to be ADA compliant.
So how do we get people into the stores, then?
Well, I think, I know the scoop was really happy with the way they got theirs in. I don't know where else the step is different than it was before. And some of them have gone away. But there are some, they, I think they constructed them from, instead of going from the road to the property line, they went from the property line to the road and made them the best they could. But I don't think there's anything we can do to change it.
That's too bad. Maybe we could find a way to get ramps for those awkward stores. I know up in the past, Channel Side has always had a ramp sitting on over there, and it got used.
I don't know whether that one's got a new step or not. I haven't
No, but I mean, maybe they could come up with a No, but I mean, maybe they could come up with a way of.
Sure.
Encouraging people to do their own ramps or something.
I know that, uh, Mary down at the scoop didn't like the way they did, had a plan to do her step, but then they made it wider.
Mm-hmm.
So that you could walk beside someone to get them up there. And she was going to put a little ramp there for somebody with a wheelchair.
Mm-hmm.
She'd done something creative, but I know there's not enough, um, there are some that'll never have ADA compliant, uh, stair, um, entrance.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? See, Michelle, you wandered out of here?
No, I, I do have, it's Nancy, I do have, um, two things to, to ask about. In reference to the sign law, what, where are we with that, Norma?
I haven't done anything with it.
No, I understand that. So can we set the, uh, date for the public hearing or do we have to wait for it to come back from Joe?
Well, I think we ought to have it come back from Joe, but if we set the date, I won't, a little ways.
Well, I was thinking October twenty-sixth and that gives us, you know, that's the end of the.
He isn't going to say anything about it probably, just a formality and charges two hundred dollars and. Tell us it's fine. Is, is that during a regular board meeting, Nancy?
Yes, it is. Well, we need to know if he's going to get it back because the information.
I'm sure he will.
The information needs to be sent out to the local businesses so that they all have time and anyone else in the community to review it.
Right.
All right, so if you could check with Joe on that because.
Yeah, sure, I'll be glad to do that.
Because his reply to me was he was waiting on the planning board, so if you.
Do you want to set the date tonight and then if I call Joe and he says, oh, no, 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 we'll just.
Yeah, yes, I, yes, I think that's a good idea.
And then we can move forward with, um, getting it in the paper and everything. I'll call Joe. And we'll set the, um, day, uh, for the twenty-sixth at, um, six o'clock. Is that what you?
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Okay, I'll call him tomorrow.
Okay, all right. So then the other question I have, and I'm not expecting a, a complete answer on this, is, um, the emails that we've been getting from Union Street about making changes to our, to the Marine District. How is that handled, et cetera, et cetera? Because I, my limited understanding would be it's a very lengthy process.
It is, I think. I think Richard would be your best bet to explain it. I'm not good at it.
Yes, I under, okay, I, I can follow that.
And I think that, um, now, you know, I don't know what's going to happen over there.
No, I understand and I, my question isn't, isn't directed to one side or the other. I just see all this information coming in and what are we going to do about it? That's all. So I'll check with Richard and then, uh, we can, yeah, find out from there.
I think he was satisfied with the legal side from, uh, Bob Sly, what he told him to do. So he apparently had got the information he needed and was working on that.
All right, well, I'll give him a buzz this week and get a better understanding and see what we need to do.
To be done to change that, but, uh.
Right, because I, I felt it's a very lengthy process, not just come to the village board and let us make a decision.
No, I think you've got to go to Z B A and you've got to go to the planning board and they've got to have a, um, they, I don't know if they ever even went in front of the planning board again. They were talking about that.
No, I, I, and I, I could be speaking out of turn. I don't believe they did.
I don't think they did either.
No, I don't think so.
Because I usually check to see what things are happening in the village for those meetings.
Right, same here.
I haven't seen it.
Same here, yes, okay.
Check with Richard and share with us, so.
Okay, all right. Now, did you, did you want to make any, um, this letter to the library? Was there any discussion about that? Or we're just?
I, did any, everybody get a chance to read it?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Well, Bill has some questions, I'm sure, but at least it gets the ball moving.
No, that's fine. I just didn't know if there needed to be any other im, input. No, okay, that's all I needed.
So Alicia, I just would, um, send it to Debbie Hunter and she can disperse it to her board and see what happens.
Do you want me to do that or should I package it up for Nancy? How do you want to do that?
Well, I, well, maybe if Nancy wants to send it out, but I don't think they could digest it if they waited to take it to the next board meeting. If they had it and they could discuss it at the next board meeting, but.
Right, I, I think it should go to Debbie and then Debbie could send it out to her board.
Yeah.
As necessary, because the board meeting is the third Tuesday of October, so.
So that's the way it's all, yeah.
Yeah, that would give them time.
Should I send it as an email versus a hard copy? The last letter we sent to the president at the library was lost and we ended up having to resend it later. Should I just send it electronically?
Yeah, sure.
I think that's a good idea and then you'll, there'll always be a hard copy available. Yeah. Yeah, I do. Okay, thank you.
No, that was, uh, I got a lot of information together for, um, Alicia and she put it all together, made it look good, so that was great. What else do we have? Is there anyone out there in the public that's got any questions?
Uh, yes, I have one. This is Joe Christman. Uh, the Rotary Park bathrooms, when are they supposed to be open? I got a call this weekend that they got opened late. Um, and when are they going to shut down?
As long as the weather's nice, so I'd like to keep them open. Are you still on, Terry?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, we had.
Leave them open until, um, after the Christmas parade.
Typically, typically we do that.
Now, there's not going to be any real Christmas parade. It's going to be probably.
But there's still quite a few people downtown. I, I lock them on Sunday and Monday night. And I'm surprised the number of people that are still down there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. There was quite a few people.
I don't know. The guys open them up in the morning, don't they, uh, Terry?
They open them. That's what I was getting ready to say. We had an issue with the ladies' room doorknob. It broke. We had to steal one from the Mary Street dock. That has a button. When they're opening the door at the ladies' room, they're hitting it up against the wall. It's locking the door, so when they go out, they can't get back in because they block them, they block the door. So we have another, we have a locksmith. He, he's in the process of giving us another door handle. It's just, those are special keys and it's not easy to just go out and buy a doorknob. Um, so we've come up with a, a way to make that doorknob hit that. Hopefully it doesn't happen because I got called twice over the weekend too. So, um, yeah, uh, my apologies on that. I, you know, it's one of those things, so.
Well, I was just concerned. About, you know, make sure the bathrooms are going to be open for that market that you want going on down there.
Oh, yeah, we, we intend to leave them open until, you know, it dies down and. And it's worked well all summer. The guys do a great job to get them open in the morning and that doorknob did work better though last night, Terry.
Pardon, Norma?
That, it was easier to lock it last night over the weekend. I don't know if you did something different, just temporary, I don't know.
A ladies' room?
I locked somebody in there one night. And his wife was standing out there and she said, my husband's in there. I said, what do I want me to do? It's your choice. I can leave him there or I can unlock the door. No, it's worked out fine. So what else we got? Anybody? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd make that motion.
Yeah, I bet you would. Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Have a good night, everybody.
You too. You too, thanks.
Yeah, you too.